I wasn't able to be here. I was on a cross-country trip that could have turned out worse. It was rough. But anyway, got the job done and everybody is safe and sound where they wanted to be at the end of that trip. So anyway, I'm happy to be back and have already had the chance to have some meetings this morning and kind of get plugged back into the details of operating county government. I'm excited to be with you today. And first, we're going to have some introduction.
Yeah, we have a new employee we want to introduce to everybody.
County Administrator Ani Corda will get us started with that introduction.
We have Josh Hillberry, who's joined the regional planning team back there. Josh, is this week number three now?
Yeah.
All right. He has joined regional planning as a planner, and I think you're a graduate of the University of Cincinnati, is that correct?
Yeah.
A local Lancaster boy, graduate of Fairfield Union. All right. Anything else you want to share, Josh?
No, just excited to work here at the county. And I'm very excited to be here.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
You wear a tie every day, do you?
No.
You don't wear a tie every day?
Um, there's important stuff.
Okay. Well, we're glad you're on the team.
Well, it's kind of a rule around here. You know, thrilled to have you as part of the team. As you may know, I knew your grandma and your grandpa and your mom and...
Absolutely, the whole family.
I do know the whole family. Was not involved in, and Josh says good fortune to join us. I'm just happy to hear about it. And Josh probably wouldn't say so for himself, but back in the day, he was a flamethrower and one heck of a ball player. And I got the chance to watch you play a number of times and really enjoyed it. And I hope you bring that same tenacity to your new role and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And I did share with Josh that I'm sure he needed to scoot on to other things down at regional planning so he could stay and join us or sneak on out. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, you're welcome to get on with your day and again, welcome to the county, sir.
That's a really good way to start a meeting. I think we should do that every week.
Want to have somebody dress better than me?
Hire... That's kind of a given. I mean, have a new employee every week. That'd be great. Can you guys hear us with these microphones?
Yes.
All right.
Be careful what you say.
Yeah, no, I'm going to get in the pattern here. When I want to whisper something to Ani that I don't want you to hear, I'm going to turn this whole thing off. That's usually like, okay, now who's this next person we're going to hear from? This time, I actually know. This morning, we're going to have a listen and learn. As folks may or may not know, but in the last couple of years, the commissioners have been a little bit more interested and involved in homelessness. Our thought was, going back a couple of years ago, that there were situations and circumstances on a macro level that caused us to wonder and worry if it might get much worse before it got better. And so we have participated with some other entities and organizations and some potentially needle-moving investments to try to get our ore in the water on these issues. So we're thrilled to have with us today the Director of Adam H., Marcy Fields. I see Carrie Dyer is with us today too from LSS. And then we also have Miranda and Tim as members of the team that's going to give us an update on, I'm suspecting, a number of issues, but to include a recent project that has involved an effort to reach out and communicate effectively, as effectively as possible, with the homeless population to learn what we could about what their needs are and why they may not be getting met in the current environment. And if I misstated any of that, it's unintentional, but we welcome you and look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you so much. I'm Miranda Gray. I'm the Program Coordinator at the Fairfield County Adam Board. This is Tim Hubbell. He is from Lutheran Social Services, and we are very excited to be here today to present some really great information and really highlight the fantastic work that Tim has been doing in our community. He's very humble, but he is doing some really great work, and so we're happy to share that with you all today.
Marina, if I could just make a suggestion, you get two choices.
Okay.
Either use the microphone.
Okay.
Or you shout it out.
Well, I pace a lot. I'll try to use the microphone.
It's up to you, but if you drift from the microphone, get over there.
Can you hear me okay now?
I can hear you fine.
I think you have to turn the little button there, Miranda. It should be green at the bottom.
Right. I think it's on now. All right.
All right.
Okay. So we're just going to give you just a really quick overview of Lutheran Social Services and the Adam Board. I know most everyone in this room is probably familiar with who we are and what we do, but we'd like to just start out with that. So Tim, you're up first.
So the goal of Lutheran Social Services, can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you great up here. For some reason, the acoustics of this room are more difficult to the backside. So if you shout it out that way, we'll hear you just fine.
Okay. So the goals of Lutheran Social Services are creating a better world by serving people in need. The Lutheran Social Services programs cover 26 counties in Ohio, and there's four core societal issues that Lutheran Social Services is reaching, which is food, shelter, safety and healing. And then within Fairfield County, there are several programs available. Emergency shelter, part of that shelter is also designated for veteran services. So there's one wing that is strictly for veterans. So there's also recovery housing, also known as sober living. Psychiatric aftercare for those dealing with mental health issues. And then there's also a food pantry further down on East Main Street.
Great. And as far as the Adam Board goes, the Adam Board is the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Board of Fairfield County. Every county in Ohio has an Adam Board, and we are sort of bound to the rules and regulations in the ORC. In this county, we have 13 Network of Care Agencies, and those are our core agencies that are out in the community that provide the direct services. So at the Adam Board, we do not do direct services ourselves. We essentially provide the funding. So we plan, fund and monitor behavioral health services for Fairfield County. Okay. So we're going to talk about the homeless outreach project, but I think it's helpful to sort of see where this project came from, how it came to fruition. It was probably around, somewhere in 2020, where I think we all started to notice that we are seeing a lot more unsheltered folks in our community. So we're seeing a lot more people sort of living on the streets, in encampments in our community. And as part of our Fairfield County Housing Coalition, we created a subcommittee on homelessness. So I was part of that subcommittee, a number of other professionals in our community, other stakeholders who have an interest in housing and homelessness, all came together. We had some meetings to sort of talk about, you know, what is it we're seeing? Why do we think this is happening? And what do we do about this? So after some conversations, we decided that we think an outreach team would be a good solution to try to figure out, you know, what is it that these folks in our community are experiencing? Why are they experiencing this homelessness? And how can we help them? So we decided at the Adam Board that we wanted to do something about this. So worked with Marcy and other staff members to put out an RFP, and the RFP was for an outreach team. We had three applicants for this. Lutheran Social Services applied and was awarded the contract with us. And Tim was hired in, what, March?
April.
April. So Tim was hired in April. I know that it took some time to find Tim, but we're very grateful that Tim had decided to apply for the position. Now, Tim's not new to the community. He came from a recovery center, so it was sort of a natural integration for him. All right, now Tim's going to talk to you a little bit about what he is doing out in the community.
Yeah, so for me, it really is progressive engagement. As most of you know, meeting folks on the street, you really have to get to know them a little bit. They don't trust always initially. So that's kind of my mantra right now, is that progressive engagement. So my role then is to find, engage and link those experiencing homelessness with services and resources. Many of them have no ID, even though they've lived in the Fairfield County community for a great deal of time. They don't really know what services are available. Also, it's person-centered and trauma-informed. Again, my progressive engagement. There's a lot of mental health and addiction issues out there, and folks, again, are looking for someone to point them in the right direction to try to find the assistance that they need. I extend care and support, do minor first aid in the camps when I find folks out in camps or in the streets, under a bridge, a lot of bug bites, a lot of first aid needs, a variety of different things that I encounter. And then obviously, work closely with community partners, the community paramedic, social workers, counselors, pastors, and probably more importantly, trying to engage these clients with family members. Because oftentimes, if you can get them engaged with a family member, it might enable them to get off the street and get into a more secure setting. So some of the survey results from the first six months or so of my engagement are here. And again, this is my experience. I'm not taking any data from another county, from another state. This is the data that I have collected since April with 142 respondents. Fifty-two percent of those reported mental health challenges. I think it's higher than that, but that's what they're reporting. Forty-six percent reported substance use challenges. Thirty percent reported both mental health and addiction issues. About 32% of those are reporting the issues are, they're getting care. So a majority of folks, 70% of folks with an addiction or a mental health issue are not receiving services for that behavioral health challenge. Eighty-one percent of the folks that I have engaged are Fairfield County residents. Eighty percent reported no family support. As I previously stated, I think it's really important to engage folks with their family because there's help there. Seventy-six percent are male, 24% female. The average age is 38, and I think the average length of homelessness is just over 12 months.
Well, I just want to make sure that everyone sort of understands that Tim has engaged 142 unique individuals that are unsheltered in our community. And that is significant. I think it is a lot more than we at the Housing Coalition had originally thought, at the Adam Board had originally thought. And as part of the work that we're doing in our community, we do what's called a point in time count every year. The point in time count will count sheltered and unsheltered individuals, but this past year, we only counted 12 unsheltered folks in our community for the point in time count. So just really want to highlight how great the work that Tim is doing and going out and trying to engage individuals. That's a lot of people experiencing homelessness.
Could I ask a question, please?
Sure.
And Tim, I guess maybe this would be mostly for you.
Yes, sir.
But in some of us who aren't experiencing food or shelter difficulties, we might have a perception that this is a choice, that someone who's homeless or on the street is choosing that lifestyle. What's your experience in talking with these 142 people? Did you develop a sense as to what extent at all, I guess, that a choice is being made in that regard?
Steve, that's a really great question. And I think, again, speaking of just the encounters that I've had, I would say it's not a choice. Typically, it's some type of trauma or life happening, whether it's an employment issue, it's the addiction issue, it's the mental health issue, the lack of cognitive decision-making to be able to make a decision to change their lifestyle. I think that's a small percentage of folks is what they choose, but I would say that's not the majority of folks.
Please, continue with your presentation. If my colleagues have questions, I'm sure they'll jump in along the way as well.
Commissioner, if I could, thank you. So you go out and you have conversations and you continue to engage with folks and you're offering services. Is there a... Are you the person that kind of is the keeper of the file on that person? That, you know, are they progressing? Are we helping move them through the process? Or do we see some success, I guess, in moving people into a situation that's better than the one they're currently in?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. Yes, in some ways, I'm the keeper of the record. There's a system called HMIS in the state of Ohio that tracks those experiencing homelessness. So once I've engaged them into the system, they become my client. Some come into the shelter, then they get some case management care. Some I've directed to different behavioral health agencies or Javan Family Services or the Lighthouse for domestic violence issues. So yes, I do track, and yes, there is successes coming. I think it takes human engagement with these folks to show, help show them the way. When they are worrying about their next meal or where they're going to sleep, it's hard for them to make decisions because they're in survival mode. And so it's hard for them to make decisions, life decisions, about their success. So to answer your question, yes, there's a way that we're tracking, and yes, we're seeing some successes.
Thank you.
Another question, if I might.
Yes, sir.
I was just thinking of it while you were talking and your engagement with these folks. How did you feel about your own personal safety in going out into these environments and engaging with these people? And I guess the reason I ask that question is some of us who, past folks that we think might be on the edge, whether it's in stores or restaurants or on the street or even driving by, some folks get just a little strike of concern that, you know, they might be in danger, either themselves or somebody else. And I wondered how you felt about that while you were going into these encampments and interacting with these folks.
I think initially, that's a fair question, Steve. Initially, I had some concerns, but as I've engaged these folks in various camps across the county, within the city, I have not engaged anything but a welcome from them. I've experienced no violence and not even heard of any violence between the community of those experiencing homelessness. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I'm saying I have not experienced it, and I'm pretty at ease now as I approach these camps. Even if it's a new camp, I'm pretty at ease enjoying it.
On behalf of the Commission, thank you for being willing to do that.
I think Tim has sort of touched on these data points already, but go ahead, Tim. Tell us a little bit more.
Yeah, so currently, there's 60 documented camps within Fairfield County. Most of them within the city or on the edge of the city. Many of the camps are along Main Street, Memorial Drive, the Hocking River and the railroads. And then individuals seem to stay near community resources, bus stops, the bike paths and the railroads. Railroads are often their highway to here and there, but same with the bike paths. But I'm seeing the bike path use a lot less. I think the railroad, the Hocking River, is where I see most folks traversing at this point in time.
Do you find these encampments or groups of homeless people in other parts of Fairfield County as well?
To date, I have not found any yet. I'm still busy identifying those in and around Lancaster. I do stay engaged with other communities, Pickerington, Baltimore, other areas, and I'm not getting any reporting at this time.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. And this is just a quick Google Earth map of, there's obviously Lancaster. You can see Memorial Drive going up to the left, East Main going to the right, and you can see all of the red marks are encampments. Now, they morph and change. There could be a camp in a location one week, and the next week it's gone because code enforcement's been there or they've decided to move on. So they're constantly morphing and changing, but that's the record of the camps as of September. And so what I encounter is generally, it goes back to the questions from the commissioners, which I deeply appreciate. I generally encounter individuals that are kind, cooperative and appreciate the support and the assistance. Many feel a sense of hopelessness and disenfranchised by government, community social services systems. Those S's today are getting it. As well as by the lack of affordable housing, which is what I hear all the time. I can't afford an apartment. I can't afford a house. I hear that probably nine out of 10 clients that I engage. Many feel overwhelmed with the details of getting their life back in order, and that includes seeking care for mental health and SUD, which is addiction, challenges. And the camp and encampments range from primitive to more advanced. So some folks are sleeping under a cardboard box. And as you'll see in a little bit, there's also two-story structures that folks are living in. The common thing that I see is a tent. They put it up in a place that they can't be seen, and so there's a lot of tent structures in and around Fairfield County. This is a fortage on the left at Cincy Park. That is a cocoon, plastic cocoon on the bridge by the Sheriff's Department, and another on, that's Lincoln Avenue on the far right. And then here's two-story structures, large camps. There was six people in this camp. There's actually a loft in this photo on the right, so there were two people sleeping up in the loft on the right-hand side. And then this is what you get a lot with a lot of it. I'm currently taking trash bags out with me now, so if I find a camp, I ask them to pick their trash up. That's part of what we need to teach them, is how to... They're in a terrible situation, but let's keep the camp clean for all the health reasons and environmental impacts.
Speaking of impact, I think it's pretty clear, you know, and Tim's role here in our community, the impact that he's making. And as he talked about that progressive engagement, really, I see any type of encounter with Tim a success because it really is about building those relationships with these folks to try to figure out what they need and how we can help them get to where they can, you know, live in a home, which is taking some time. Tim does have a success story to highlight. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I think there was one case in particular. He's an African-American male with some mental health challenges, extremely vulnerable in this community. And after several engagements, actually about a month-long engagement, he was admitted to our aftercare program at Lutheran Social Services, and I think he's doing well and just really excited about that. And that's just one of many examples. There really are more, each day, there's more and more stories of success, and there's still challenges.
So we don't want to stop here, right? We still have a lot of work to do. We're committed at the Adam Board to try to help grow this program. Tim is just one man out here doing the work, you know? He's identified 142 individuals with needs. So we need to work on growing the program. We'd like to add a peer support component, so someone who has lived experience with homelessness that can go out with Tim and engage folks. We need a case manager that can help link these folks to treatment, help link them to housing. Like I said, you know, Tim can do some of that preliminary work. There's a lot more work to be done. We at the Adam Board did apply for a grant that came about through the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. It was a very competitive grant. I think they told us they had 17 applications and they awarded two grants. We were not funded, which we were hopeful about that we can provide more funding to Lutheran Social Services to grow the program, but we were not able to secure it. But we continue to look for other ways, grants that we can apply for so that we can provide that funding to Tim. We are also hopeful that other entities in our community will notice the importance of this program. I know as Tim presented data, you know, we are seeing lots of individuals who are experiencing mental health or substance use challenges, but not all individuals who are living unsheltered are experiencing those challenges. We're the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Board. We can fund, you know, programs and services to support those folks who are experiencing mental health and substance use challenges. So, you know, that's about half of the folks that Tim's encountering. See if I missed anything. As Tim noted, we would like to try to expand into outside areas, outside of Lancaster. Like Tim said, he's not really getting many reports of unsheltered individuals, but we know that there's probably some folks out there. There's probably some folks in the Pickerington area, and so there's a lot of work that is still yet to be done.
Yeah, so I have just another question. Yes, sir. So...
All right, I got distracted. You continue and I'll come back to you.
I got a question that I forgot to ask while you were on the data. Are you experiencing any children in the homeless population?
I am not. If there are children involved, what I'm hearing and seeing is they're staying with another family member, so they're not experiencing the homelessness.
Good, thank you.
I recall my question, my distraction, just for folks that are in this building right now, we're apparently experiencing a problem with the elevator, but it's currently not functional. I hope to have that repaired very soon, but we'll keep you posted if we get more information on that. The question I had was, again, it comes from kind of a popular culture, if you will, and perceptions, but there's a concern by some that the more services that you provide, the more engaged you are with the community, the homeless community, that you could become a magnet or an attraction, if you will, for additional homeless to come this way. I'm recalling your statistics, 81% of being from here. But do you have any sense as to whether we're on a glide path, I guess, to potentially be a place that they might want to come because we're doing more?
I think, I don't know the answer, Steve. I think that, again, the experience that I've had is the majority of folks are Fairfield County residents. Some come from peripheral counties. Very few, I keep hearing, well, they're all coming from Columbus. That is not my experience at all. And I think most counties are doing something relative to homelessness support. So I don't see it as a landslide of folks coming to Fairfield County because we do a great job. I won't say that won't be possible, but I'm not, I'm not really seeing it. Folks that even live in peripheral counties, in my experience, have some connection in Fairfield County, whether it's a friend or a relative. So they came here initially for that, and because they're here, then they started getting services. But I don't really know the... It's a great question. I don't really know the answer. I can only speak of my experience.
Yeah. Well, I'm just going to go out on a limb here on behalf of myself and my colleagues and say that as you continue, I would hope that you would stay in touch with the Commissioner's Now, we've been listening for 25 minutes and you broke our heart. Now, you do this every day. Is it clear to us? We would like to... We would like to help.
Thank you.
So as part of growing the program, we were able to provide some additional funding to Lutheran Social Services so that they can lease a vehicle. And Tim has so fondly named his vehicle Hover, which I just love, so I had to make sure that I put that on the slide for him today. So it's nice. This is a way that he can be seen in the community. When he is driving to the encampments, they will see the logo, they'll see, oh, I know that's Tim. Let me go talk to Tim today. So it's, it's been great. So this is just one piece of our puzzle, right? So we, like I said, we want to grow this program. It starts here with engaging the unsheltered folks, but really, this is just a small piece. The commissioners have offered $3 million of the ARP funding to the Adam Board for a housing project. That is a piece of this puzzle as well. Don't want to miss anything on my slide. So part of the project, I keep getting really loud, part of the projects that we're doing includes the 24-unit permanent supportive housing project at Venture Place that the Adam Board is engaged in building. And the other part of the project is the expansion of Lutheran Social Services Shelter. Our goal really with these folks is to engage them, get them engaged in services, and then hopefully, you know, be able to get them into housing. Now, we don't want to wait for Venture Place to open or the shelter to expand. We're trying to work on that now, but it will be very nice when we have Venture Place that will be able to tell these folks, hey, we've got a place, and this is where we want to get you to. So I know we're running out of time, and part of the presentation was to talk a little bit more about Venture Place, the shelter expansion, but we can save that for a whole new presentation another day. But I just wanted to make sure that I pointed out that that is a piece of this puzzle, and thank the commissioners for their generosity and contributing to our project.
If I may.
Commissioner Fix, and then I'm going to ask if Commissioner Levesey has any comments or questions, but Commissioner Fix first.
So, you know, the first step in trying to solve a problem is to understand what the problem really is, right? And we've been asking for years, how big of a homeless problem do we have? And today, thankfully, for the first time, we've heard an answer to that question. So that number is much bigger than I thought it would be, but I'm grateful to at least know what our starting point is and truly, deeply appreciate the dedication that both of you, but Tim, that you obviously have in going out and finding these people and finding ways to help them. I know we're just scratching the surface and we've got a long way to go, but we've started, and to me, that's a really big deal, so I'm really deeply appreciative. Thank you.
Commissioner Levesey.
So thank you very much for all you do. Tim, you know, you're, you're a real warrior to get out there and actually help people, give them first aid, you know, because sometimes that's more difficult than one might imagine. I worked as a paramedic for years. Helping people is one of my great passions. But you mentioned 142 that you've identified as homeless, and your last count was that you're seeing 12, is that correct?
Yes.
So what kind of difficulty have you had in finding places for these folks to shelter? That has to be a major challenge, right?
Yeah, I will say that, you know, we have a lack of affordable housing here in our community, which you all are aware of that. We only have a certain amount of shelter beds, so, you know, folks aren't always able to go to the shelter as well for other reasons, whether that's, you know, they're experiencing some mental health issues that makes it really hard for them to function in a shelter setting. We've unfortunately had people that have caused trouble at our shelters and are not allowed to return. There's, you know, all sorts of different circumstances that really contribute to the problem.
Absolutely. When you're dealing with either one of the issues, substance abuse or mental health, and of course, substance abuse can contribute to mental health. And, you know, again, I think years ago, we liked to sweep this under the rug and just not even be concerned about it, but it's all of our concerns. Again, thank you for everything you do.
Last question, if I might. We have a number of folks here with us today and some other number that is observing this meeting with our online opportunity, and someone out there who is, has food and shelter and is in, you know, a pretty good place in life, if you will. They might wonder, what could they do? And so is there a thing or two that you might share that folks who have an interest in trying to be charitable or helpful? What would you say to them?
I'm going to look at Carrie Dreyer over here, the Executive Director at Lutheran Social Services. I would say that providing a donation to their organization would be very helpful so that she can, you know, use the funding to either, you know, support the emergency shelter or supplies, whatever else they might need.
I agree with that. Financial donation is always helpful in the sense that I think, big picture-wise, we need more shelter beds, and really, money is just the only way to keep that. I think, specific to outreach, one of the things that Tim struggles with is he finds people that are sleeping outside and they're willing to come into the shelter after he establishes that rapport, and then he calls and there's no shelter bed available. So then he's kind of left there, you know, not knowing how to help, and what they need isn't what we can provide. So, big picture-wise, financial donations are always the best option. On a smaller scale, you know, for the shelter itself, we're always looking for providers because every male we provide to the people there are from community organizations. But then also maybe supplies for Tim to take out to the camps. And Tim can probably speak to that as far as like what, what items are most requested. Bus passes, running for bus passes is good. Anything you could add to that?
Socks, believe it or not, and first aid items, always a request. And it's obviously, when winter rolls around, it's going to be hats and coats and that type of thing, gloves, those types of thing.
So we are exceeding the time we had allotted, but just on behalf of the commissioners, please know that we're going to be continuing to think about all that we've learned here today and some of the ideas that you've shared with us. And I would just, again, ask that you stay in communication with County Administrator Cordell with your challenges and your needs, and the commissioners will continue on this current path that we're on to try to find ways to be helpful. You know, we, unfortunately, we're politicians, and the politics of homelessness are horrible. If you talk about it, it's not good. If you don't talk about it, it's not good. So we can't find our political footing on this. All we can find is some care at heart for what these people are experiencing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any update, John?
There are maintenance technicians very close. Might have this looked here.
I hope we do.
Tool in. Drag this out.
You're offering escorts down the stairs.
Thank you, folks. We are thrilled to have with us today a number of representatives from the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. As folks may or may not be aware, our relationship with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission changed pretty dramatically just a few years ago. I don't, I don't even know that we had one prior to a few years ago, but we do now, and we're thrilled about that. And so I think the person at the podium now is William Murdock. I'm going to call you the president, but you're probably something else.
I'm just an executive director, but thank you.
Okay, almost president.
Almost, yeah.
Mr. Murdock, please.
Thanks, and morning, everybody. Is there a, how do we advance the slide switches point?
The PDF, so we were struggling.
Oh, perfect, even better. Well, thank you, commissioners. We are humbled to be presenting to you after such an important presentation, so really appreciate the lot of the work done on homelessness. It's certainly an issue around the region, and seeing the county pay such attention to it's really, really moving. We appreciate Fairfield County's leadership and membership in the region. And just looking at the three commissioners, in the last year, President Davis, you kicked off a meeting on rural transit for us, the Workforce Center. Commissioner Levesey's been engaged at a forum we held in Buckeye Lake area. And Commissioner Fix is an ardent advocate for transportation funding and more in Fairfield County. So, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. When I look around, there are folks who have been really, really involved with us, and that matters not just for the county, but it also matters for the region because you're a strong voice at the region. So we've got a presentation of some of the things that we've been doing today. We'll roll through that. I have two folks with me who may help at some point. Joe Garrity is our Senior Director of Government Affairs and Community Engagement, and Eileen Lube is a very familiar face of their membership officer. So why don't we roll to the next slide? So this is MORPC. MORPC is the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. You know, we serve all of central Ohio, 15 counties, 85 communities around the region. And I think what's maybe interesting to the county is just in the last year, we've had additional counties join. So if you look at them out, those counties in green are all at the table. And I know counties look to each other for leadership and they compete a little bit, and Marion County was the last county to join, and I think it matters because counties are a strong voice when we look at our board. Roll to the next. So Fairfield County in particular has the third-most members in MORPC when you look at all the various entities from the villages, the townships, and the various cities that we have. So we, we like to say there's strength in numbers, and Fairfield County's definitely represented strong with these communities. In fact, we're headed up to Pickerington after this to do a visit. Go to the next slide. We always want to lead with our values, and we've really focused on this. Pay it forward is really important to us. We want to invest in local government and public service and young people. We want to build value for our members. The county's a member of MORPC, so you need to see that you get that dollar back, more than a dollar back for every dollar that you're investing in us. And in fact, that's coming out here in the next week or so where we do an annual review of that. Driving, investment, infrastructure, so, and also looking at prosperity. So everything we do is through that lens. Next slide. You know, we always talk about growth when we come here, and the question that we've been getting the last year or so is with major announcements, especially led by Intel and some of the other major economic development announcements, what does this mean? So we updated the forecast this year based on what we're seeing, based on what we're seeing in other regions, and it is going to increase faster. But for the region as a whole, we'll go from about 2.4 million to about 3.1 by 2050. That bump that we're talking about is about 5% more than we'd expected previously. 5% is 150,000 people, so it's still pretty significant. However, it's not like you might see in the media in places like Austin or Charlotte. Still pretty strong growth. But when we look at the next slide, which looks at Fairfield County in particular, this is a snapshot in time. So this is 2022, births and deaths almost balanced each other out. We're still coming out of that pandemic effect when we're looking at demographic numbers, so we're watching that closely. Our trends on births nationally are a little bit lower than they had been before, so we're watching that. What we're really seeing is net migration to Fairfield County. So just in 2022, 1,800 people. I know you're working on your comprehensive plan right now. This is important because when we think about growth, we're still seeing strong but steady growth. Our best guess at 2050 shows the county at about 214,000, which is about another 50,000 people.
Can I ask a question?
Of course, yeah.
You know, you just look at, and I don't have, I'm not good with colors at a distance, but I'm going to call it the green middle line, and if it's not green, maybe it's...
That's green, oh, yeah.
Okay, good. If you look back at the history on that line and then the projection forward on that line, the trajectories look similar from an historical standpoint into the future. Just at some level, that seems to have a similar trajectory. And some of us have a sense that, that we're undershooting the mark in those projections, that there's so much activity going on, so many announcements, so much progress on that front of economic development that, that we may bust through those lines from an historical standpoint. I just wondered if you might share your take on that.
Yeah, thank you for the question on that. So when we look at where growth is going based on what we see right now, it's actually, we're projecting it's going to be a little bit faster over the next decade than it has been over the previous decade. Still, if you look at that, that long line there, the growth here has been constant and steady, but we think it's going to be a little faster going forward, and we know that's part of what's being experienced with all of the projects that are happening. There's a wrinkle, though, that we're watching really closely. Because the birth rate has gone down so much, the kind of growth we're experiencing right now may not, may not generate as much population, so we're watching that carefully. Again, coming out of the pandemic, that really changed all of those numbers in unexpected ways. But if you look at that chart, so you've got the green line, and then you've got a little gray line at the top and a little gray line to the bottom, that's the confidence interval. So it could be even faster, and that's something we're watching, but it could also be a little bit slower. We base this on your zoning, we base it on your comprehensive plan, we base it on demographics nationally and in the states. So I guess what I'm getting to is the growth, if it feels a little faster, what we're seeing is over the next decade, it very well may be faster than it was in the past decade.
Thank you, please continue.
So if we go to the next slide, we're deeply engaged with the county on transportation planning in two ways. One is called the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and this is something where we work with communities in the northwest part of the county on how to allocate and plan federal funds for transportation. There's been a lot of work on this. Right now, we're updating what's our long-range plan, called our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Been getting a lot of feedback on this. We also recently updated our Transportation Improvement Program. One of the big projects in Fairfield County was a $750,000 grant for the Refugee Road Corridor. We've been working on programs like Go Ohio and with your Mobility Manager. I know Rick Zabrack and his organization's been looking at Go Ohio Commute, which is a program that helps businesses connect people to transportation options. So Rick, we appreciate your leadership and support on that. There's been all sorts of involvement on studies from the US-33 corridor study, the Pickerington Road Interchange, the talk of the US-33 to 70 connector, and the 256 interchange. I wanted to pause on 256 there because one of the things that MORPC represents the region on is priorities for what's called TRAC, which is the state's major projects fund for transportation. And recently, the commission released our updated list, and for Fairfield County, the top project was this 256 interchange with 70. And what's really interesting, and this will happen later this month, is in the state Capitol bill, they allocated a half billion dollars for additional rural projects. And by definition, Fairfield County is rural. And when we present our priorities to the track board, 256 is our top rural project, and we're going to push very hard to see if we can get funding. So even though regionally it falls behind things like the 70-71 split, it's the top rural project, and we're going to make that known and go to advocate for that. So we're still working with ODOT to figure out exactly what the rules might be around it, but we do know that Fairfield County's legislative delegation was instrumental in making that $500 million available, and we know that Fairfield County is eligible. So I wanted to make sure you knew how important it was to us that it's our top rural project.
So, thank you. Yep. When you talk about the 256, you talk about the Taylor Road project? Okay, all right. That is, you know, you and I have spent time in your office, and thank you for that with Jeremiah up, and that is a huge priority for us. So the fact that you're advocating on our behalf for that is greatly appreciated, as is $750,000 for Refugee Road. I travel that road every day, and... I travel that road every day and that widening and, and the work that's being done to help those intersections is definitely a big need up there. So thank you for your, your participation in that. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for that. And we know there's a lot more work to be done, so we're focused on that. On the next slide, actually, we can talk about CorpO, which is the rural side of our transportation planning. And again, Fairfield County is one of the founding members to make sure we do that. Just recently, we were successful on the state budget and getting the money for these rural planning organizations doubled. And the first slug of that money came through and $250,000 has been proposed for the Lancaster Memorial Drive pedestrian crossing. And after that award is made, we have another million dollars. So right now CorpO is talking about how to solicit projects. So there may be additional projects in Fairfield County as we go. We're also updating the transportation plan for CorpO, which I know there's a virtual open house October 19th from noon to 1:00. And this will be updated and adopted later this year. So this lays out those transportation priorities. And thank you, Engineer Up, for being involved in all these things. We also were successful for getting a safety action plan or a safety, a grant for a safety action plan for all the CorpO counties. So this is something that's really important for Fairfield County because the region is going to conduct this plan and it makes all of your communities eligible for safety dollars from a capital perspective. So if we change to the next slide, I'm going to switch from transportation to water. There's been a lot of conversation with all the growth about is the region prepared to serve, service growth with water and with sewer. Ohio PA has been very involved. Certainly, Licking County's been in the news for this, but we know that every county is asking themselves these questions. Ohio PA has asked us as MORPC to partner with them on what's called a regional water study. So this is something that we'll look at utilities, we'll look at quantities of water, water quality, resilience, and try to develop a strategy and a good picture of where the water service is and what we need to do as a region. This will not say who will be providing where, and this is not getting to something like regionalization, but it is a pretty big study. Our commission and Ohio PA expect to take the next step later this month to move forward on that. It's also connected to some work that we, we do for Ohio PA as a technical provider on, called 208 planning, which is sewer districts. And this is something where MORPC works in each county to identify where those boundaries are. They've asked us to help them do more in that area. Again, with the growth, there's overlapping areas, there's areas that aren't served. So we're looking at a new mechanism there that could do everything from additional planning to even things like dispute resolution. So that's being studied right now as, as we go. So a lot more coming on water. Certainly, the need was there before, we were doing some work previously, but with all of the growth, just like transportation, water and sewer has become really important. The next slide are some bread and butter things that we're doing. We just rolled out, to complement what we do in technical assistance and with our internship program, in August, we rolled out the Planner Pool Program and the Consultant Services Program. And this is something that we think everybody from your regional planning commission to your local governments, to the county, might be able to use. Where the Planner Pool is a ability to loan employees out to entities that need help. So if somebody retires, if you've got a position open unexpectedly, where you've got a, a big tranche of permits coming in and you need help, MORPC now has a stable of employees that we can loan out to you for 10 hours a week or two months or whatever it is. It's really hard to hire and with our local governments, many of them don't want to hire a new permanent position for temporary issues. So we're excited to kick this off and this is something that might be helpful. We're also working to model an ODOT program on streamlining procurement for consultants in the building zoning planning space. So more to come on that, but we've been listening to our local governments and what they need. And they've been telling us they need help with finding employees and getting through to find consultants to help them with all this growth. The next slide.
Holly and I, we did meet with them on the planner thing to see if there's ways for us to supplement their days.
Great, I didn't know that, that's great. Yeah, it's nice to see Holly back, at least as the interim director too. So speaking of Mr. Zabrack, we are also working in the economic development space to support One Columbus and all of our economic development efforts. A big thing happened in September and we received federal designation for the counties you see up there as an economic development district. What this does is it opens up grants and loans and technical assistance for businesses and local governments in the region. So it's a tool that One Columbus has wanted for a while and we were able to finally get that designation after several years of going after it. We're the first major metro in Ohio to get it, so we're proud of that. But a part of that means that we now have the ability to hire somebody specifically focused on economic development and that person actually starts today. So our economic development director, we hired from Ohio State, Pedmimorition starts today. So we're excited for that. We've also had a big effort supporting the region's effort around a proposal for regional tech hubs, building off the Silicon Industry, building off of Intel and all of these efforts. And we're hoping to hear news on that soon. Go to the next slide. You're familiar with the program, Competitive Advantage Program. This is where the county works to tell us what your top projects are for economic development. These are the top three. And these are the three that we'll look for money for, possibly help write grants, lobby for, look for financial assistance. So these projects are very familiar to you and want you to know that they're priorities. Go to the next slide. We're still working on passenger rail. What's happened since the last time I stood at this podium was the state of Ohio has endorsed one of the projects directly by making application for Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati. And they put in the state rail plan, Chicago, Columbus, Pittsburgh. We made application and we'll find out in November if it moves to that next level. That next level will answer all those questions that everybody in the room has, the where will it go, how fast will it be, how much will it cost, those type of questions. So November is when we hope to hear from the Federal Railroad Administration. Next slide. We have been working with communities to emphasize the Ohio Rail Crossing Elimination Program. In that recent budget, there was also $100 billion for rail crossings. This is so important because these are state dollars that can be used, but they can also leverage a significant amount of federal funds. So the Ohio Rail Development Commission has said any community that has a project, add it in the list. This may be the one time that it's easy to fix some of these issues. And we know that there's crossings throughout the county, so we've been working to make sure awareness is out on us. Couple of other things on the next slide. You know, we work on trails and housing. There's a lot of work in that space. We continue to look at how we can bring additional dollars to this. Go to the next slide. Every year, we host a summit on environmental sustainability programs. This is focused on local governments. This year, we actually have an opening panel with the Global Sustainability Chief from Intel, Kenny McDonald from the Columbus Partnership and the Ohio PA Director, starting about, starting it off about how business and all of this growth affect efforts. So we're excited to kick that off. Go to the next slide. We've been really focused on our rural events. We actually held the Rural Mobility one here in Fairfield County back in April. Thank you, Rick, for hosting us. In July, we actually came to Buckeye Lake. I know it's right on the line there, but it's all in the greater Buckeye Lake community and we had a chance to get out on the lake, which was a lot of fun. And on the next slide, we've got one focused on trail with tourism in Hocking County with the former state tourism director. So these have been a great way to make sure that we're really getting into these different parts of the region and looking at how we can be helpful to them. At this moment, I'm going to take a pause and let Joe Garrity talk about briefly about our policy.
Yes. Thank you, William, and good morning, commissioners. First, thank you all for your leadership and partnership. You threw away fantastic state of the county over the summer from your fiscal stewardship to how you effectively utilized ARPA dollars to civility to Dick Tracy. It was a fantastic event, so thank you for that. So we're advocating a lot. Right now, the state capital budget process will be starting here pretty soon. From a regional perspective, central Ohio typically gets about $26 million to pursue for capital budget projects. We know how impactful these funds can be with the workforce center being one key example of that. What makes this year interesting is with the operating budget passing earlier this year, there is $700 million available for a strategic community investment fund. So those funds can be a little more flexible and will be at the discretion of your state legislators. So if you haven't already, I would continue to work with your state legislators from a prioritization perspective. MORPC is happy to advocate on your behalf. But then we also work in partnership with the Columbus Partnership, who helps elevate some key regional community projects as well. MORPC serves on that committee as the voice of, of local governments, but more specifically, the voice of local governments that aren't Franklin County and the city of Columbus. So we're, we're happy to advocate on projects on, on your behalf through that as well. And the operating budget as well, two quick items. On October 6th, communities can raise their competitive bidding threshold from 50,000 to 75,000. And then after 2025, it can go up 3% on an annual basis. And then we were very pleased in something we advocated on the public policy agenda that we added this year was increasing the low, or creating the low income housing tax credit, $100 million per fiscal year. Mayor Scheffler here in Lancaster serves as the chair of our regional policy roundtable, so he helped sort of lead that effort for us. One thing specifically as well with the discussion earlier is the Senate has a select committee on housing, where we testified last week and we brought in Mayor Scheffler and a few other local government leaders to advocate on the importance of developing affordable housing. I know Senator Reynolds, who is chairing that select committee, they'll be going across the state and are having forward hearings. I would recommend it if you have any suggestions to, to advocate on that behalf and we're happy to assist in that regard. Next slide, please. MORPC also serves and facilitates a group called the Central Ohio Defense Group, where we try to elevate our unique defense assets, the Defense Supply Center, as well as the 121st Air Refueling Wing. We're working to create an intergovernmental support agreement at Rick and Becker, where they can better expedite and procure services to the installation. And then our local governments can have a new revenue generator. So a good example is if snow is on the ground and Rick and Becker needs it plowed, a nearby community can go there and plow that snow for them. So this is just another unique partnership that we're, we're working on and then also just working to protect these jobs. Sometimes we forget how many, how much job creation is with those two installation, about 13,000 total combined, so.
And then, next slide, please.
And then MORPC also facilitates a group called the Columbus Region Coalition, a group of 16 different regional partners advocating with one voice to bring strategic community investment back to central Ohio. We were all very pleased that the government did not shut down over the weekend. And one way that this group is effective is through congressionally directed spending. This coalition endorsed 15 different community projects earlier this year. Of those 15 community projects, eight went through the appropriations committee process. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that whenever there is a, a budget that is passed, that those projects are included since they have already gone through committee. With that, I'm happy to turn it back to Mr. Murdock.
We will finish with a few benefits. Thank you, Joe. We focus on building value for members. A couple of key things. Administrator Cordell, there is the new salary and fringe benefit survey that just came out. So 40 communities around the region have shared that information so that as you're budgeting, you can know what your neighbors are up to. We also have educational partnerships. So all county employees receive in addition to whatever the county does, benefits at Franklin University, Ohio State's MAPS program, OU has a couple of programs as well as done as an edge program and a number of other things like Grant Finders and more. We go to the next slide. This year, we started something called Money Mondays. I'll give you one guess what it's about. It's about finding money for local governments. And every week for half an hour, we cover a different topic about how local governments can go after dollars. And then we have like an office hours approach. You can see the topics coming up, everything from affordable housing to artificial intelligence. But every week we do that and it's virtual so that it's easy for our communities to join. On our next slide, we host regional forums and we have one coming up in Circleville. We're in Pickaway County, but this is something that every year we hold five sessions around the region just to talk about bread and butter issues. And the last slide, and I appreciate your attention, I know it's a lot of information, is Fairfield County interns and our, our MORPC intern program in Fairfield County had nine of them between you and your communities out of 51 for the region. And this is a program where we connect young people who are interested in public service to paid internships in the summer. And we appreciate the county's leadership there. We started with paying it forward and we wanted to finish with paying it forward. It's so important to get young people connected to public service. So thanks for your leadership on that. And with that, happy to take any additional questions.
Well, just a comment, I mean, as you know, sir, I was resistant initially to our membership in MORPC. And eventually I was the last one in the water to support it. And I guess in the words of Fonzie, I was. Rrrr. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. I might have more questions and concerns that I'd like to touch on today, but for the fact that we have moved somewhat off schedule through no fault of yours, but I will see first if my colleague, Commissioner Levis, he has any questions or comments.
No, I don't, I don't have any comments other than the fact I think it's a great relationship we've had and I look forward to bigger and better things from Fairfield County. Thank you, William.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Commissioner Fix.
Yeah, just, so, you know, we always talk about return on investment and certainly we feel like we're seeing a great return here. The thing that I'm most appreciative of is your openness and willingness to hear us, right? So when Jeremiah and I call and say, hey, we want to come have a meeting to sit with you and your key leaders for an hour and a half and go through what's important to us and to sense your level of engagement was, it's a big deal. So just wanted to let everybody know that we appreciate that about you and we appreciate the relationship that continues to grow. So thank you for what you guys are doing.
Commissioner, I appreciate that. I know we're due for another one here soon. Commissioners, just in general, I appreciate how much you've pushed us and made us focus and aware of different things. We're better for it, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. And just a quick footnote to make up a little bit later in our meeting, but the county commissioner's office, County Administrator Cordell and myself, on Saturday, met with all of the employees of Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit. As part of our ongoing conversations regarding the likelihood of transferring governance of that transit system from the city of Lancaster to the county. Both entities have passed resolutions of intent to try to effectuate that transfer by July 1st. And we view that as a step along the way towards being prepared for the transit needs of the whole county as opposed to, you know, where the city must focus primarily on their, their corporation boundaries, if you will. So we're on that path and I, I can see situations and circumstances along that path where we might need help and where we might also be able to share our rural transit experience and what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it the way we are with others that I know in the rural communities are experiencing transit impediments.
Thank you for that. That is a big step and we'll be here as we can help along the way.
Thank you for your time and your courtesy.
Thank you, Commissioner, please.
Okay, I want to give our IT Director.
I'll have Jimmy introduce him. Jimmy's his direct supervisor.
Yeah, so this is Gene McCullough. He just started yesterday, so he will be our new computer support specialist, one of three now. So we are glad to have him. He's got 20 years of experience. He's already starting to hit the ground running today in his day two, so we're very excited to have him and forward to see what he brings to us.
You don't look old enough to have 20 years of experience.
We played the guessing game yesterday. Guess how old and everybody was under what?
So I got you at 32, so glad you could start at 12. Please, if you'd like to say a few words.
Welcome to the team.
Welcome, Gene.
Back on day two, that's a good sign.
Well, on behalf of the Commissioner's Office, welcome. And we appreciate your willingness to work with us and look forward to hopefully a long career here in Fairfield County. And our meeting's a little off schedule today. We're getting behind, but we definitely wanted to take an opportunity to say hello to you and give you a chance to introduce yourself. And thank you very much for being with us today. I suspect if you're a computer support specialist, there's probably work stacking up and so...
Tickets to work.
If you need to get on with the business of your day, we certainly understand that and do appreciate you taking some time to be with us, okay? Thank you all very much for being with us.
Okay, brief announcement, courthouse elevator is functional again. Who wants to go test that?
So there is now a way to get from the third floor to the first floor if, when we conclude our business. At this time, the Commissioners will allow an opportunity for voters and taxpayers to address the Commission. As you know, if you've been here for the past hour or so, we are deeply behind schedule with an 11 o'clock meeting that cannot be moved. So we will ask for you to extend your courtesy and compliance with our three-minute rule. If you would like to address us, you can come to the podium and begin by stating your name and residential address. Under those terms and conditions, is there anyone who would like to address us at this time?
My name is Yuraysh Peeman. I believe that I've been here long enough that people realize who I am. And I would like to make a comment that when I started in school, a good many years ago, we had the privilege of having a pledge to the flag and prayer every day in school. And being a teacher for over 35 years, basically, I seen the changes that have been made in the school. And one of the biggest changes that have happened is we've moved God out of the position of in the building, so to speak. We're moving things that mean a lot to people in their moral actions and so forth. But one of the things that was taken out, the Ten Commandments. And then the first four commandments deal with our relationship as individuals to God. That's our personal. And the first one here, of course, is thou shall not have other gods before me, not have any images that we worship, and shall not bow down before any other idols, for he is God, and shall not use the name of the Lord in vain, and remember the Sabbath and keep it holy. The next six rules God gave us, honor your father and your mother, shall not kill, shall not commit adultery, thou shall not steal, thou shall not bear false witness against your neighbor, thou shall not covet your neighbor's wife or anything that the neighbor has. With these Ten Commandments, taken out of vision of people, especially young people, it has affected the moral fabric of this nation. And Jesus said, thou shall love the Lord with all your heart, soul, and mind, and it is the first and greatest commandment. And the second is like unto it, said, thou shall love your neighbor as yourself. And these commandments are the basis for all the law and prophets. And all great countries in the past, if you study history, started with these basic commandments, even though that wasn't religious as we see it today. It started with that thought.
Please conclude your remarks. Please conclude your remarks.
So I'll close it with the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can see, as I'm carrying this up here, that this is a real short message. By the way, before I start, I heard a lot about affordable things like affordable housing. Well, how about affordable taxation? I gotta find my place here first. There are some of you here in this room who do not know the real truth. You think that gathering together to combine intellect will solve problems, but it doesn't. It just makes for spending more tax money, more money for officials, more positions, but does not solve the problems of Fairfield County. Problems of Fairfield County and USA are spiritual problems. You rely on man's direction and yet you reject God's. Only God Almighty can solve problems, but this group is not even willing to pray to God and ask for Him for guidance. I hope that people don't think that they have the answers or that your boss does. Thus, the advice of the non-elected or the non-appointed committee persons outside of a circle is seldom taken. We remember when a man by the name of Steve came to these meetings. He was an engineer and had great knowledge as to how to solve a big problem. He even offered his time and knowledge to you without a price, but you never sought that advice. Well, to those who do know Jesus as Savior and Lord and His Word as truth and wisdom, it appears that you're very prideful and thus foolish to not feel the need to pray to Him and ask for His guidance and His wisdom for decisions being made for the entire county. And then you've heard me speak before of Dr. J. Brennan McGee, who really has gone through the whole Bible and that's why there's five volumes that he's written covering the entire Bible. And here in Zechariah 10:3, I'm going to read one verse. "My anger was kindled against the shepherds, and I punished goats; for the lord of hosts hath visited his flock, the house of Judah, and hath made them as his gluttons in the battle." And then he goes on to explain, and he repeats the one verse or portion of that verse, or God is calling the leaders of Israel the goats. Unquote. When I was a young fellow, and this is McGee speaking, I worked in a place where they killed cattle, sheep, and pigs for the butcher shop.
Please conclude your remarks.
It was a very bloody business. And the thing that seemed to me more cruel than anything was the use of an old goat with a bell around the neck. He was called a Judas goat because he would lead the sheep to the slaughter. They would start this old goat up the ramp and all the sheep would follow him and then the goat would step aside while the sheep went to the slaughter. Now, when the Lord said, I punish the goats, he is talking about the leaders in Israel and that means the leaders of today too. Instead, they were false leaders.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time?
False comment. And actually, could I finish my sentence?
No. I've really been patient with you. You're coming up on four minutes. We respectfully ask for three. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time? Stephanie, good to see you again.
Good morning. Okay, that's brief. So I wanted to first say that I appreciated hearing from Lutheran Social Services and Add H this morning. They are just one of the few partners that we work with on the Housing Coalition, but also Lutheran Social Services, Tim and his group, Carrie. They came out on the Pleasantville Build, so it was really cool to see them out there. And speaking of the Pleasantville Build, we will be dedicating that in the next few weeks. I'll be getting the invite out. That will be October 19th at 5 o'clock. So that is House Number Three that we have dedicated here in Fairfield County. So we're really excited about that one. And then we will also be starting on Sixth Avenue next week on Wednesday, so we're seeking volunteers, anybody that wants to get involved. The last full week of October, we're doing a Women in Construction Build Week, so we're highlighting all of the women, not all of them because they can all fit probably, but many of the women who are in our county and involved in several companies and organizations that are in the construction field. We partnered with the folks out at Google to make this happen, so several of the women and companies that are a part of that project are represented. I feel like that's a lot, but there's one more thing. We completed our third annual Project Playhouse event last week at the Workforce Center. And I cannot express enough how much of an asset the Workforce Center is to our community, to us, and I can't wait to see how it continues to grow. And Rick and his team, Jenny and Sean and everyone involved there, they're just so awesome. I show up Monday of that week, which was last week, and I am there all week and doing so much setup. And we have the event, it's a full-day event on Thursday, and the cleanup and everything. And so if anyone wants to see a completed playhouse, there's still one there for the time being. Check it out, check out our social media and see all the ways. If anybody knows anybody that wants to get involved next year, we're excited to continue this project and the ability we have to partner with Workforce Center and the amount of time that they let me do, all kinds of stuff there. So thank you, Rick and your team and the county for all that you do for us and partnerships that you have, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate you. Thank you, Stephanie. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time? Sir.
I guess it's too nicely. I live out in Pleasantville, Ohio, Fairfield County. I'm here about solar panels. I live real close to the US Farm. And I don't want solar panels out there, especially industrial. Writing letters, I'm finding that to be a waste of time. I'm going to try to cut my three minutes short. I listened to your video and your video. The evidence and the facts, you went out to a couple of farmers' fields, they described to you what they thought. They happen. Drainage, things like that. Toxic waste that's in those, we don't know if it's going to come out. What about waste when we had their 20 years and they're gone? Where are you going to put them? Can't just say, well, worry about that later. You gotta worry about that. And the footage of the acreage is lined up against dozens and dozens of houses. 200 feet eastwards is not going to do any good. My front yard is 200 feet wide. I can throw one rock from one end to the other. So my theory is, well, not my theory, but I think there should be designated areas for some of these things, especially where there's not a lot of housing development that is going along. There are special places for these panels to go. We should put them there. And, you know, that's pretty much, you know, what I think that they should do because you're just, you're going to ruin my, if I want to sell my house, the value. It's not been proven yet, but I don't know if any of you guys would want to come out and live in my house with a bunch of solar panels around it. Would you buy my house? Of course not, unless you like solar panels. That's pretty much the bottom line. If you don't mind it, you don't care about it, I'll live there. That's fine. And, you know, the evidence of everything, you can only, you know, put so much evidence out there about it. Then pretty soon, Google and things like that are pretty much, you look up solar panels and they're wanting to sell you solar panels. It's kind of censored in a way. And we haven't been into this for a long period of time about what may be and what may not be. But I do know this, that everyone that leased their properties out, they have houses that are backed up, coveting your neighbor. That's all I do know.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll keep it short and sweet. Nick Bundren, Land and Liberty Coalition, spoke here, I think, a month ago. I'm here to talk about rights and why America, I feel personally, is the greatest country in the world. We have rights and it doesn't matter how anybody feels about those rights. I'm sure there are people that don't like the way I speak. Well, I have a right to speak. I have a right to express my speech. I have a right to bear arms and I have property rights as well. Just like the people who are leasing their land for solar have a right to develop their land, no matter how people feel. It's a right. If Commissioner Levicy wanted to spray paint his car pink, I'm sure his neighbors wouldn't like it, but he has a right to do so and government should have no say in determining that. So I just wanted to leave you guys with a reminder that we have rights in this country and they should be protected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Sherri Pymer, 3464 South Bank Road, Millersport. Actually, I am in Walnut Township. I agree about the property rights, however, people don't have the right to do whatever they want to with their property. They have to go through zoning. They have, if they want to develop it, they have to do, go through the steps. I do not know why solar panels are able to go onto agricultural land that has been agriculture for many, many decades, actually centuries. There was an article in Columbus Dispatch a couple of days ago, and I'm just going to read you a little part of it because this was, it really concerns me. The title is "Powering Amazon: New Solar Farm Creating Electricity to Run Operations in Ohio." And it talks about the fields where soybeans, corn, and other crops were once grown outside of this rural community along the Ross-Pickaway County line are now covered by 775,000 solar panels, enough to power 75,000 homes. Now, it says enough to power 75,000 homes, however, that's not what it's going for. The 274-megawatt Yellow Bud Solar Farm became operational this summer. The developer behind the project, National Grid and Renewables, is selling the electricity to Amazon. to Amazon as part of the e-commerce giant's efforts to rely exclusively on renewable energy by 2025. Amazon is buying the power, the power, from 17 solar farms in the state and one of Ohio's 11 wind farms to help run its operations, including the billions of dollars worth of data centers it is building in central Ohio. Amazon says it has been the largest corporate buyer of renewable energy for each of the past three years with more than 400 projects around the world. What we're doing in, what we're doing in Ohio is part of our broader program, which is to get out, or to get all of our operations across the world powered by, with 100% renewable energy. And then it says, according to Nat Salstrom, and this is all I am quoting the Columbus Dispatch, I've been misquoted before, and so this is from the Columbus Dispatch. And so they're buying the power from 17 solar fields in Ohio. So it's very misleading to say that, and this is one project, the Yellow Bud project, that it's enough to power 75,000 homes, but that power is going to Amazon. When I was up in Madison County taking a look at two of the projects up there, I was told, now I have not independently confirmed this, but I was told when I visited two of those projects, that one of the projects, the power was being sold to Verizon. The Verizon had a contract on that power. So they're taking up thousands of acres of our farmland to power their buildings.
Please conclude your remarks.
That's it.
Thank you very much for being with us today. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? We thank you all for coming. Briefly, anything on legal?
Yes, Commissioner, I just wanted to remind the board that the law changes from House Bill 33 went into effect yesterday. So as a result of that, I think the impact for you all and your families that have a threshold of 75,000, we went ahead and updated our contract routing forms of our purchasing snow, where the competitive bidding threshold limits are. We're going to do an updated training on this in January, just to start the year with CRMS and contract routing in general. After 20, update that annually, just so folks have that hard number of what the limits are going to be, because they're going to go up 3% every year. But I just wanted to alert you that was in effect now.
Thank you. I appreciate you being with us today. Thank you. Administration update with brevity. We have an 11 o'clock that cannot be moved.
Gotcha. All right, American Rescue Plan update from the 30.6 received. 28.8 has been appropriated, 15.4 expended, and 4.6 encumbered or obligated. CCIO and the Ohio Association of Behavioral Health Authorities have recommended changing the Adam H. board appointments based on changes in House Bill 33. Marcy and I have been in contact on this. The board currently consists of 14 members, and there is not a desire on the Adam H.'s board to adjust that number. We'll certainly evaluate that here at the commission level. But if it stays at that 14, we would need to be adjusting the number of appointments from the commissioners. It would need to go to nine to comply with the new two-thirds requirement for the number that the commission is appointing versus what OMAS is appointing. So we'll work through that with Marcy and her folks there. That information just came out this week. We also have the visit, would you add anything to that, Marcy? Sorry.
I think that was a great description.
Okay, perfect. Visitation Center Open House, that is today at 2:00. The facilities team has done a fabulous job getting that building up and ready and renovated for the Visitation Center program, so happy to show that off to everyone today. Healthy Aging Grants, this was also information that came out. This was part of the state budget. So it's a grant process. Fairfield County will receive $359,409. We this morning, we being Stacy, went in to do the registration process for us to access those funds. This will be something that we'll evaluate the terms and conditions of that grant and then get that information out to the community for folks to be able to provide us information on how they might want to spend that. Meals on Wheels has been in close contact with me ever since this came out in the state budget and has already provided a proposal, but I did share with Anna that we will go through that process and then follow back up with her once we've established that. A couple additional points on the county purchasing law changes. Thank you to the prosecutor's office for changing that routing form. There will be a resolution on for the board's consideration to adjust the administrative approval threshold from 5275 to mirror that change in the competitive bidding threshold itself. And then also, it did allow the county to accept construction bids up to 20% above the architect's cost estimate, and that would have been helpful to us on a number of projects last year, as John tells me, that we had to go out and redo because of that particular piece. And the last one is changing county credit card law to allow for purchases of goods and services. CCIO just provided their information on policy development for this, so we'll be reviewing that and then pulling in folks from the prosecutor's and the auditor's office as we go forward to develop a policy in that area. Highlights of resolutions, the review packet contains a list of administrative approvals. There are 24 resolutions on the formal agenda for the voting meeting today. There will be one additional resolution that we will put forth regarding the personal policy manual, adjusting the vacation payout amounts based upon what's accrued in a year for employees, and then also adjusting the merit-based increase thresholds. And we'll continue to evaluate those merit-based thresholds on an annual basis based upon budgeting. A couple other resolutions of note, Jeremiah has on his resolution to schedule the annual township trustee meeting, and that's a, an annual requirement, right, Jeremiah?
Yes.
Anything you want to add on that?
Like you said, it's an annual requirement that's in the URC, requires me to meet with them. It's been there a long time, but it does, it does help. It's more than just to get together because we have to. It allows us to sort out a lot of things and allows me to, the opportunity to get some reminders about, about force accounts, things like that. So that's what we do.
Perfect, thank you. We also have a bid award for redoing the parking lot at the Workforce Center. Thanks to John and Rick on that. We'll be able to, I think, add 107 spots, is that correct?
Seven to 120.
107 to 120. So much-needed spots for up there for when we do have, you know, a full house. You know, there are times when you do see some, some extra spots, but when we have everybody in there, there's just not enough parking currently. So thanks, John, for your work on that. We also have a resolution to approve a lease agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Public Safety for a deputy registrar location at the Fairfield Center. So this is, it works for a while. We have the title office moved. This will allow for the BMB to be co-located with that. It'll be in a, in the same building as Brandon and right next door. And we were able to negotiate this lease at the level that would be appropriate for leasing at the Fairfield Center. Utilities is going to purchase two trucks. And that is it on resolution review. Budget review, Bart.
I just want to thank all the elected officials, departmental heads, and their fiscal staff for the continued support as we move through the budgeting process here. This has resulted in our ability to get the commissioners a pre-read to them for the, for the hearings that are starting next week on October 10.
All right, thank you, Bart. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Commissioners, the calendar review and the correspondence received dissolve in on the agenda. Anyone can pick that up on the table, or anyone online can contact the commissioner's office, I can provide that to them.
Thank you, Rochelle, for your expediency. That's all we have.
She did, she does point it out where it could be found, so we can go a little quicker.
That'll be fine. Under whole business, I'll just make a comment, certainly in light of some of what we heard earlier today. Primary funding mechanism for county government, sales tax. Fairfield County has the lowest sales tax rate in central Ohio. Commissioner Levesey, anything under whole business?
So Rick Zabrack and I traveled all the way to Athens Friday. So when I got him down there and back.
Got the big award.
Where are you going to put it?
So, so I recommend we actually have a trophy case at the entrance of the Workforce Center, so Rick can show off all his awards.
The Wizard of Workforces Awards?
Pretty much. Rick, you like to add it.
It was a nice, it was great to be recognized by the Uofens and our partnership. It's recommend, recognizing, as Stephanie was talking about earlier, being a good community partner, which the commissioners and the county is. So, so, so.
Commissioner Fix under whole business?
So just quick on the land use plan. A few weeks ago, I mentioned that we were pulling back a little bit, and since that time, I've been working to connect with townships and villages throughout the county to schedule one-on-one time. We actually had our first of those meetings in the Village of Amanda last week. Tony Vogel, our utilities director, joined me, and it was a great conversation about the future of the village and the future of Fairfield County. And the response that I've gotten from the folks that we've been calling is overwhelmingly positive and appreciative that they recognize growth is on the way to Fairfield County. It's already here, and they're really appreciative of the opportunity to collaborate with our folks on, you know, on the team here and the Planning Next folks. So I'm kind of reinvigorated that we're doing the right things for the right reasons, and the leadership teams around the county are appreciative of that effort. So I'm excited and forward.
Thank you. Go next to Commissioner Levesey for any new business.
So the Fairfield County Fair starts next, officially next Monday, but it opens on Sunday, and I always look forward to that.
As do I, sir. Commissioner Fix under new business?
No, thank you.
I wasn't going to mention this, but I will now. I was thrilled to be able to take the last week of my life and helping an elderly lady of extremely modest means fulfill one of her dreams, which was to move to Klamath Falls, Oregon. So I drove the 26-foot U-Haul with a travel trailer on and her treasured 1976 Pontiac Bonneville on the back of that through the Rockies and successfully got her to her new home in Klamath Falls. I was really moved upon arrival there to meet with six missionaries from the St. Peter's Church who had volunteered in the effort to unload the 26-foot U-Haul truck. There were things in there that I personally wouldn't have been able to lift without all of their help. So I'm very thankful that that trip was completed safely and was dismoved to be able to help her and fulfill her dream of getting to that, that new place. And I'm hopeful that she will get to enjoy that opportunity. And it was a good experience. One of the things I worried most about on that trip was the timeline. I had made a commitment to visit with the staff of the Langston Fairfield Transit on Saturday morning, and as the trip wore on and we got behind schedule, my ability to get back in time for that meeting was seriously in question. I had talked to Hani every day along the trip and said, "I don't think I'm going to make it. We're behind schedule again today." And we had a Plan B for people to cover the meeting, even though I might not be able to be there. But when I touched down in Columbus Friday night at 10:30 PM knowing I was going to make that meeting Saturday morning, I was thrilled. So I, I count last week as a success for a lot of reasons. So that's, that's all I have under new business. Treasurer Bonson, anything?
Very quickly, as I mentioned, last Thursday, had treasurers in from south, county treasurers in from southeast Ohio. We met at the Workforce Center. Rick did a wonderful job of explaining the mission at the Workforce Center, did a tour. We had lunch, then we went to Rock Mill, and they were so gracious, the Parks Department, to open up the mill for us and take us through, and the feedback from all the treasurers who attended the meetings, they thought it was very good, and I've walked away some very good ideas. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Lisa, how are you today?
I'm very well. I have nothing to report this time.
That's all right. We still appreciate being here. County Engineer Jeremiah, you've got some comments today there. People think you're doing a good job. What's going on?
I've got good people working at the county engineers, so that's what's going on. My best to keep them and be nice to them and keep them happy. Anyways, this Friday, we are having our annual rodeo. Just a reminder what that is. It's when we put the snowplows on the trucks and all that stuff and get them out, see what's working, what's not, get things fixed, get guys used to them. We set up an obstacle course. Any, anybody's welcome to come. I'm inviting all of you. If you want to drive a truck, we can get Sean on the list to do that.
Good thanks.
At my fill. Just don't try to turn around in the infield and get stuck like I did, because I'll never hear the end of that.
When is that, Jeremiah? When is that?
This Friday.
What time?
Uh, we're going to eat at 11:30, so, you know, 11, 11:30 it'll be good. If you want to, if somebody wants to, let me, let me go back. If somebody wants to drive, we can get out there about 9:00 or 9:30.
You might be interested to know, Jeremiah, on the 2,400-mile trek that I just got off of, I jackknifed the trailer three times. It wasn't four. Dr. Brown, how are you today?
Thank you. William mentioned the Senate Select Committee on Housing, and this past testimony related mostly to zoning reform as well as some additional things that would be supply-side help. And one of the things that's already in place is a tax exemption opportunity for those that purchase property to develop for residential purposes. And then there's a differential in the tax exemption for a period of up to seven years until the building begins. The building doesn't include water, sewer sidewalks, just the building itself. So that is new, and we expect to pass applications for that particular process. We have had some discussion about the policy changes. It's a very welcome discussion. We appreciate that very much. I'd just like to predict a resolution next week in terms of real estate assessment, in terms of additional appropriations for vacation conversion. Very welcome, very helpful to the operations. The budget bill requires in 2024 for the budget commission to meet and hold testimony relating to the alternative formula for the distribution of local government funds. So we're finding out more information about how to do that well in the first quarter of '24. And I have the map of the month for October, which is earthen works, rock mill earthworks, ancient earthworks, as well as cross mounds, the Greek cross that points north, southeast, and west. Very popular map, and brought some bigger ones for you all.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate you and all the work that you're doing with the county auditor's office. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rochelle, do we have any announcements?
Yes, there was a last-minute resolution that will be presented to you from the floor after the last resolution is on the agenda.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval minutes for September 26, 2023. Seven minutes, second. Discussion. Please start and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
Minutes past 2:0. From the Commissioners, Resolution 2023-10.3.A, a resolution authorizing a fund-to-fund transfer for Fairfield County Job and Family Services, fourth quarter of 2023 allocation.
Commissioners, I move items A, B, and C. Second. Discussion. Please start and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Adam H. Board, Resolution 2023-10.3.D, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer in a major object expenditure category for Fund 2066 Fairfield County Adam H. Board.
Under Fairfield County Adam H., I move items D and E.
Second. Discussion. Please start and roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Honor of Real Estate, Resolution From Fairfield County Honor of Real Estate, Resolution 2023-10.3.F, a resolution authorizing a memo expense memo received for the 2022 reimbursement of agency share of Fairfield County base mapping program 2020 to 2025 for Fund 2443.
Seven minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County EMA, Resolution 2023-10.3.G, a resolution to request for appropriations for receipts for EMA Special Revenue Fund 2090.
Seven minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2023-10.3.H, a resolution to schedule an annual Township Trustee Meeting.
From Fairfield County Engineer, I move items H, I, and J.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2023-10.3.K, a resolution authorizing the approval of a construction agreement and bid award with McKee Paving and Sealing LLC.
Under Fairfield County Facilities, I move items K and L.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-10.3.M, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer for Fund 2072 Public Assistance.
From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, and U.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2023-10.3.B, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into a major expenditure object category for Fund 2036 Department of Youth Services.
Seven minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Utilities Department, Resolution 2023-10.3.W, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two work trucks.
Seven minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. Payment of Bills, Resolution 2023-10.3.X, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need more Commissioner's approval.
Seven minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. Resolution from the floor would be Resolution 2023-10.3.Y. A resolution to approve updates to the 2023 Personal Policy Manual for Fairfield County Employees.
Seven minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for October 10 and 9:00 AM.
Accept a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I got a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. The Commission is adjourned.